Welcome to all. It is our monthly council meeting and we have an agenda that we will follow. If you don't have a copy of it, I think there are copies on the table at the back. We start our meeting with calling the role. We do that by introducing each of our council members and our staff to you. On my immediate right is our mayor pro temp, Sandra Mont, followed by Councilman Ed Smith, Councilman Fred Franklin. My left is Councilman Robert Green, Councilman Jeff Singer. Councilman Lawson, Tom Lawson is out of town and will not be with us tonight. I'm Dan Hue and it's my pleasure to serve as your mayor. We also have our town staff with us. Our town manager, Nate Perkins, will conduct our meeting for us. Our town attorney, Bill Howe, our town clerk, Joyce Walker, our assistant town manager and finance director, Kathy Bruce. We have a couple of other staff members in at the rear. Marty Myers, a planner, George Hunter, our public works director. Intern is with us this year, this summer, is Franklin Dover. And then we have Ms. Lynn Hall, managing or on the equipment and recording tonight's session. With that, council, we have the agenda before you. I think there were a couple of somewhat recent add-ons that I think all were notified of it, but you may want to clarify this.
Excuse me. We did add the setting of a public hearing for the landscaping standards which you all had asked us to bring forward at the same time that you did your tree ordinance. So that has been added to set the public hearing for it. And yesterday I received information from the Secretary of State's office asking us if we would amend some information on the records retention schedule. And I've made those amendments, but they have to be approved in an open session. So that has been added.
Counsel, if you look over the tonight's agenda with those additions. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Sorry. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, black sign. Okay, we do have an agenda that we'll follow. We'll ask our manager to lead us through the consent agenda. Okay, sir?
The first is Resolution 2013030 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for July 2013. Second is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from August 1st, 2013. Third item is the approval of council regular meeting minutes from August 8th, 2013. And lastly, the approval of council mini-retreat minutes from August 13th, 2013. All this material is in your packet. And I believe we discussed it as well with the briefing last week.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bruce, the financials for July doesn't necessarily close up the breach this year, correct? With some items that are still out there.
You're correct. This is preliminary prior to audit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of finance director or of our manager concerning any of the four items on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda items are passed. We go to the next item.
The next are introductions, presentations, and our proclamations. We have with us this evening some guests from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department. And I believe if you would like to recognize the leader of them, we can let them do the introductions.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce or recognize Captain Smith from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and going to introduce some new members to the Louisville area, or new members of Louisville area.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council, and thank you for this opportunity to let me introduce some of the, our employees that are assigned to work with you on a daily basis. Lieutenant Richard Brown is the new community service policing supervisor. He is married with two children, lives in Forsyth County, and he started his career in law enforcement in 1987. He started off in the detention center, then he worked in patrol division, actually what we were partners for quite some time. And then he worked in community policing in Clemmons, Waukatoan, Willsle. And so he's made his circle back around. During his tenure here, he also has worked in civil process unit, crime prevention unit, procurement, fleet sergeant or motor sergeant. He's worked in the courtroom. He's worked in SROs where we were back together as partners. And now he is in, assigned to the lieutenant of our community policing where we're now back together again. So we're kind of inseparable and we kind of started together and so we may end together. So I'm pleased to work with him on a daily basis and side by side. So I think you'll find the same response that I have with him. So y'all know how to contact us if you need anything. Corporal Osborne here is your community policing officer who y'all have had now for several months. He came from the Clemmons Community Policing Program and where he worked with her several years. And I think he's made his rounds around here with y'all. And y'all know if you need anything, you can call him and us. We all work very well together and pleased to be here.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it very much. We certainly appreciate Corporal Ombert and how fast that he's taken the reins of the community policing in our area. Doing an outstanding job for us and he's got an outstanding company of staff. So we're very, very pleased.
Me and the Lieutenant Buck are glad to hear that.
Certainly, Lieutenant Brown, we're very glad to have you back home. Thank you so much. Bye. Yeah, good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Captain Smith. We appreciate you. Yeah. And certainly it's our pleasure tonight to recognize a very outstanding student from our area. And I'd like to call Emily Atkins to the front. She would. Thank you for being with us tonight and certainly thank you for representing Louisville at the American Legion Auxiliary Tar Heel Rural State. Emily was chosen as the Outstanding City Citizen at this past state this past year. And so she represented the American Legion Auxiliary Post 522. She did a great job, needless to say. And we're so pleased that having you represent Louisville. And we thank you for the citizens that you are. And certainly you appreciate others throughout the state recognizing that. And so you bring honor and glory to Louisville. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to present to Emily the Town of Louisville Certificate of Achievement presented to Emily Atkins in recognition of accomplishments and participation in the 70th Session of American Legion Auxiliary Tar Heel and Rural State, representing Louisville Unit 522 and being awarded as the Outstanding City Citizen this 12th day of September 2013. Under my signature, Dan Hue, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. You do us proud. Next item.
Okay, the next item are proclamations. We have two proclamations to make for consideration this evening. The first is Proclamation 2013009. This is just honoring the retirement of Ellis Hankins, Executive Director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Do you want to handle these one at a time or just talk about them?
Well, we'll just, not to quote, skip over, but go into some detail, we will. But as some may know, Ellis Hankins is the Executive Director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. He actually joined the league in 1982. So he's had a long service career with the various municipalities throughout the state, including Louisville. He has worked and promoted good government for the citizens of North Carolina and has full-time executive director. And this, the League of Municipalities is actually an organization that's been in existence for over five years compared to the league. And it represents ever, nearly every municipality in North Carolina. And he will be, Ellis will be retiring at the end of, he's announced his retirement at the end of January of 2014. So we're recognizing him tonight for his service to Louisville and all of our sister municipalities across the state for a job well done. And we've actually got a proclamation, 2013009, that's signed by myself and all of our council members. And we'll be forwarding that to the league office in Raleigh. And the other proclamation?
The other proclamation is 2013010 proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2013, this Constitution Week.
This is something that we do each year at this anniversary is to recognize the, this period of time is Constitution Week. And it's something that we do on a yearly basis in this. Again, I'm not sure if we forward this to their office or just to recognize.
No, it's just a recognition of Constitution Week. There was something signed by Congress back in 2004 that asked everyone to make this an educational thing for the citizens. So we just do it every year.
All right, very good. So we do have that proclamation that's not last tonight also. Next item.
Okay. The next item is public forum.
Okay. This is the first of two opportunities that we have in each of our public meetings for anyone in the audience, citizen or non-citizen of Louisville, to address the council on basically any subject matter. It could be something that's on tonight's agenda or it could be something that's just important to the individual and wishes for the council to hear about the issue or the idea. What we do is we ask if any of the participants that they come forward to the microphone and podium, state their name, their address, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And it is, it is not an exchange. It is information from, from the individual to the council. We don't get in discussion, we don't debate or help discussion concerning the issue. So we do have one that has signed up and Ms. Beth Howe from, what's it say? I was looking real, excuse me. Sorry about that, Beth. Maybe it's, maybe it's our attorney that it moved.
I'd like to send this sometime. My name is Beth Howe. I do reside at 441 Rover Mill Drive. I'd like to thank the members of the council for allowing me to speak. And I must say that this is the only occasion in which my husband will be allowed to set a time limit for my comments. I'm here to reiterate my plea to leave Jack Warren Park a dog-free facility. I thought speaking to you in person might carry more weight than just an email. However impassioned, Jack Warren Park is a gem. I have written the mayor before about my deep appreciation for that space, the generosity of our benefactor, and the dedication of the town in keeping the facility so beautiful. I've spent a great deal of time there and my son and his fiance love it so much, they have asked us to host the rehearsal dinner there in the pavilion. It is a place of serenity and beauty, a place for children to play safely, a place where you can relax, take a stroll, and rejuvenate. Allowing dogs into the facility would change all that. You can post all the rules you like, but not everyone is going to clean up after their pet. Also, you can only pick up solid waste. Dog urine is going to seep into the soil. Anyone who owns a dog knows urine burns grass. It contains nitrogen. The higher the concentration and more frequently applied, the worse the problem becomes. Solid dog waste has problems of its own. Dog waste can spread harmful bacteria and parasites. No parent wants to worry that their child might be sitting or playing in a gift left by a previous four-legged visitor. Some children and even adults are frightened of dogs, even when they're on a leash. Shouldn't we continue to have a place in Louisville where none of these things would be a concern? We have committees and boards in Louisville to deal with specific issues and interests that affect the town. I've spoken with members of the Parks and Recreation Board and was told that the issue of allowing dogs in Jack Warren Park has been raised on more than one occasion and each time the board voted unanimously against the proposition. The reasoning was sound. Joni Moser Park is just down the street and allows dogs in that facility. Folks who want their dogs to accompany them to the park can choose that venue. They also cited the potential cost of town staff having to clean up after the dogs when their owners fail to do so and the possible hazards to children playing in the park. Why have these boards if we aren't going to heed their advice? Typically, dog waste is picked up in the plastic bags and taken to a landfill. Plastic bags do not decompose for decades, effectively mummifying the waste and taking up valuable landfill space. The cost of just one of those mounted plastic bag dispensers was quoted to me as being over $500. Couple that with the extra cleanup costs, the environmental issues, and you have to ask why the town would even consider making these changes. Jack Warren Park is a beautiful facility and I thank Mary Alice Warren for her foresight in donating the land to Town of Louisville for the creation of such a space. I ask that you please continue to reserve it for our two-legged friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address council at this time? We will have later in our meeting another opportunity if anyone would like to choose that particular meeting. We do have forums at the, back on the table at the rear, also the chamber, that you may submit written comments if you so choose that method. Having no one else to come forward, we will close the first public forum and we'll go into the next item of business.
The next item is under purchases and contracts. We have Resolution 2013034, street paving contract for Yadkin Valley Paving of Winston-Salem in an amount not to exceed $259,055 for the paving and repair of Bokcroft Court, Fowbrook Lane, Arboretum Drive, Arboretum Court, Ridge Gate Drive, Ridge Gate Court, Fawn Brook Road, Greenlee Drive, Peaceful Glen Drive, Spring Forest Drive, Arborland Court, Scottswood Court, and Fawndale Drive.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, if you have any questions to the manager or to our public works director concerning the resolution with the stated repair or paving to be done on those various roads in the town? I make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor. Second. Also, second. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. If the contract passes or the resolution passes the paving contract?
Okay. The next section is board and committee appointments. We do have an appointment. We have an appointment order 2013002. This is for the Student Leadership Committee.
Do you have names or?
Yes, yes, sir, it is. And we, the appointment order is for Rebecca Gillan and Ethan Thompson.
And Mayor, before we deal with this, I think it was to be the appropriate time, Joyce.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've got a little update with the student leadership.
Yes, I played at the last meeting. Councilmember Franklin asked if we could just let everyone know approximately how many students had gone through our student leadership program since it started. And so far, I've counted up 86 students. I know it sounds like probably a small amount, but you have to remember that many of those students were in it multiple years. So that's, that's really a good one. And this year, we actually have more students than we ever have had. With the addition of the two new students, that'll take us up to 19. Is that correct? So we will have 19 students this, this year involved in the program. I did want to point out a few of the students and just some of the things that has carried on since we've had it. We had one young lady who went on to start the Young Republicans at West Forsyth High School and then went on to get her law degree. So we've had a number of students and someone named Franklin, but I don't know exactly who she was related to. Anyway, she's going through this. But, you know, I have a list. If anybody would like to see the list, and I've highlighted a few of the kids and some of the things that they've done, I do try to keep up with them. So if you're interested, I do have it.
Mayor, one of our appointees, our newly ones for tonight, is here and we welcome Ethan Thompson. His sister, Ally, is here and she's been a member in the past year and she's bringing him along. And we certainly are glad to have both of them here and joining the student leadership. Ethan, welcome.
Most definitely. Thank you for coming forward. And your sister has raised a very high bar in this organization. So, but I'm, I'm sure you've been challenged with that before in other endeavors. But thank you for your interest in Louisville and thank you for your participation that will come forward in this year with student leadership.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment order 2013002.
Sorry. Is that right? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the black sign. Okay. Once again, thank you, students. Thank all the students for their participation. Yeah, I'd say with 86 different individuals and probably anywhere from two to four years of participation of each, that that's a lot of years of service to Louisville and the community. And hopefully that will continue. And it sounds like it's on solid footing with this being the largest group that we've ever had since the inception of the committee. Great. And certainly thanks go to our assistant town manager for, she's the sponsor of this group and works with them each and every session or each and every month, as she'll say. Kathy, thank you for your work in this area.
Thank you. I'm very proud of the students.
I know so. And rightfully so. Okay, next item.
Okay, the next section is public hearings. There are none for this evening. Moving on, we are into unfinished business. This is Resolution 2013011. Same item that the clerk referred to that was added to the agenda. This is for setting a public hearing for Thursday, October 10th, 2013 on L-142 to receive comments on amending the landscape standards.
Okay. And this, this sets the hearing for the regular meeting in October. Yes, sir, it does. October the 10th, 2013. Counsel, do you have any questions for the manager?
No, I do have a comment. I wonder, as we, between this and the other public hearing that we're looking at scheduled with four former planning board members, three former chairs, we haven't vetted either one of these. And so I'm wondering if it might be better for us to, just knowing the discussions that we've had, to vet those first before we call a public hearing because we may end up with something different than what we've got now. Just because of the experience we have. So I would, I would move that we wait until we've vetted them so that we know that what the people are going to hear is actually what we're going to vote on.
Well, I mean, that, that's the purpose of the public hearing to?
But we have it as a council.
On the landscaping?
Well, I'm talking about both of them because you wanted to do them both together. So that's why I brought that in hand.
Oh, okay.
I believe the intention was to brief you on those, on the, at the briefing session ahead of time. It may or may not be sufficient time, may be plenty of time for you. If it's not enough time, you can always move to continue the public hearing. But this way, at least we've got the advertising portion of that taken care of. But it's obviously just council.
That'd be suitable.
I just said we have lots of discussion when it comes to planning things, so.
Well, and as I think the attorney says, we can always, if, if we feel like after we've been agreed, that it still requires additional information or additional discussion, we can postpone or continue the public hearing. We just don't? And then continue it.
And that may happen after, at the public hearing, once and for all. There may be some additional input that may, make you decide to continue the public hearing so that you can make the changes that might be envisioned at, after that hearing.
Public hearing is designed to give the input to the public, not necessarily make the final decision on any of those issues. So we can go ahead and make the appropriate advertisements, you know, hold a public hearing if we recognize a need, if necessary, carry into, you know, into the future, if you will. But then we can have all the discussions. We won't actually let the four decisions play.
I guess my point was just that if we, if we do that and we make some major changes to it and continue it, then do we have to go ahead and re-advertise? Do we have to, you know? Joyce says no on the advertising, but just we'd like to hear comments from the public on what we're actually going to do. That was my only concern. And, and really just stems because we've got such a tremendous amount of experience on the planning board, sitting here in the council, that when we do have those discussions, they seem to get, I mean, they're very, very excellent. So anyway, I'll defer to the council on that, but that was just my thinking.
Well, I think we probably need to, for setting, you know, call for the public hearing, there is a time requirement ahead of time for that. So I think it would be, if we go ahead and set that and then we'll, then we'll deal with the information.
Both of these are time-sensitive, so I don't know if it'd make any difference. Neither one of these are time-sensitive.
I'll make a motion to approve the first resolution to 2013011.
Sorry. Any further discussion?
We do have a motion and a second for setting the public hearing on the landscaping standards for October the 10th of 2013. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
All right. That resolution passes and sets the public hearing, knowing that there may be additional discussion and questions. All right. To new business?
Okay. Under new business, we have Resolution 2013032. This is for setting a public hearing for Thursday, October 10th, 2013 on L-139 to receive comments on the tree preservation ordinance.
I think this falls in the same category as?
Well, we haven't read it yet and we're asking for a public hearing on it. I mean, it'd be my preference that we, we actually read it and discuss it and get into it. We know that this is going to, this one's going to have a lot of discussion. And so I would, you know.
Well, I dare say this is not going to be one of those, you've got to pass it before you read it or before you understand it type of thing. So I certainly don't think that we'll get into that procedure.
I think Mr. Myers, I think Mr. Myers sent an email to everyone with a copy of it. I think Mr. Myers, I think Mr. Myers sent an email to everyone with a copy of it, so I, I think you should all have it. It is not in the format that I will be presenting to you. The copy that he sent to you is so that you see it very plainly. And you know, I always have to do the outs and the ends and all that stuff, but we wanted you to see it as it will end up in the book.
Might ask our planner, who's with us tonight, as to where this stands within the planning, the planning board?
They have taken up both items and have voted to recommend them favorably to this council. We've had our public hearings on the landscaping and tree ordinance. The landscaping actually came, was some time ago, March, and we held it, this board held it, I guess, awaiting the arrival of the tree ordinance, so that we could bundle them together and consider them, because they do refer to one another and complement each other, so that's, you know, sort of...
Now, the, the tree ordinance actually came to us earlier in the year, or even, I forget the exact timing on that.
There was an original version of the tree ordinance that was submitted, I think, to you folks in two thousand and eleven, maybe November of two thousand and eleven. And it was decided, or thought by the, the previous council and this current council, that perhaps that was not the approach that, that you folks sought for your new tree ordinance. So, we went back and revised it, came up with a big draft, a big format, and one that has a much different approach to tree preservation and protection than the previous version did. So, this is the version that you're looking at.
But, given that history, doesn't that, doesn't that absolutely make my case? I mean, that's the whole point, is if we're going to have a public hearing, I'd like us to, the citizens to have what we're going to do. It's, it's bounced back and forth through two councils, and, and like I said, we've got a lot of experience here, so I think kind of makes my point, is I, I think we're premature, I think we're putting the cart before the horse on the public hearing for this particular one, given its history and given the experience on the planning board, or on the council, I mean.
I don't remember if we got to the point where we even set a public hearing on the original project.
Um, excuse me, when I went back and, and looked at it, what you all had done was, in your, whoever made the motion, instead of motioning to have the public hearing, opening it and then continuing it, the motion was that the public hearing would not be held until the tree ordinance came up and that they would be done together. That's, you know, so, it's going to help.
Well, certainly, I think that Councilman Zinger brings forward some very pertinent points of the...
I feel the same way. After I've read the document, there's still lots of questions I have. And I would encourage the other members of council, if you've not read it, to please read it thoroughly.
Any other comments from other council members? Or is it preference, or...
I would like to do... I'm sorry, I said, I would think we ought to, I would think we need to delay it probably until we...
Delay setting the, the public hearing?
I do.
I'll make a motion to that effect, that we delay it until such time we've got something that the council and the planning board is in agreement on, that we can put forth to the public to set them see it and then get our, get their reaction.
Have a motion to, to delay setting the public hearing?
I'm just raising a hand.
I have a question. Do you want to go back to the other one? You just went ahead and set that public hearing, and now this one, you're going to delay, and you wanted the two together.
We can still hear the one for next time and then, or for the other one, and that way that's done.
Well, the landscaping one actually was pretty much finalized, was it not, Mr. Myers, back several months ago?
Yeah. Right. It was basically just simply inserting some additions to existing language that was in the UVO that referred to trees, landscaping, planting, that type of thing. So, if it's your ability to go ahead and have that one before, I, I certainly could do that, and those changes, if it, if it's recommended favorably by you folks, we'll just simply drop those changes into the UVO and await your consideration of the tree ordinance. Tree ordinance is totally due, it's not in there.
Yeah, okay.
But, the landscape changes are. Are the landscape sections and buffering sections are all in the UVO, so it, it conceivably could go ahead.
For some reason, I thought that part of this tree ordinance was inserted into the landscaping and hoping that if this passed, it was already there.
For last person?
Yeah, I think that part of it had been inserted into...
I think that the relationship is such that, if I'm not mistaken, the landscaping sections simply would cover their design standards for new development, your buffering, types of trees, large rosy trees or even small, that type of thing. The tree ordinance would be for new development, for a new subdivision, for properties that were being taken down, that were greened, that were being proposed for development initially. And it's mostly, if you look at it, I don't even have it, it looks at, from a residence, mostly residential, in new, for a new subdivision of the life, whereas the tree standards that are found in the landscaping section, UVO leans tendling more toward the commercial. So, that's why they complement one another. The landscaping sections, as they're in, as they're proposed, they add to the, you know, would cover us on the commercial side. It was thought that the tree ordinance would cover us more for new sites being taken down for development that, that we're wanting to protect, new, existing stands of trees, not planting trees per se. So, that's how they, they're complementing it.
Well, once again, I think that probably in our briefing session, we want to go into depth on, on both of these.
Then I amend my motion, that we, we hold on both of them then, until after we do that.
What we have to do to go back and...
Sounds like you're doing it, you're okay.
Okay. Did, did we have a second on the...
Wait a minute. Let's, let's clarify some stuff. We, we, we have a motion, we have a second, we approve Resolution 2013-011. That's to approve.
That's to reconsider your prior setting of the public hearing regarding the landscaping.
But can another council member make that? Since I made the original motion to approve this resolution? And it was, and it was seconded, and we've already voted on. That must have passed.
It hasn't passed.
Yeah.
Ladies, your question is that we reconsider that motion? I don't think there's anything prohibitive you can do either. That may not pass.
I'm just trying to clarify here. This is the first time we've been faced with this kind of a situation, if you will.
And it doesn't have to refer back to the individual that, that made the motion and the second to begin with?
I, I would, I would say that'd be preferable, since it was Mr. Franklin's motion previously, that if that's something he's going to originate, it would be probably preferable if one originated prior motion, considering being the one who's going to do this. If he doesn't do it, I don't think it's out of order to ask the council to reconsider prior motion. They may not wish to end up reconsidering it.
We can do them separately if you want, it doesn't matter to me.
What he's talking about, I think the question is about landscaping standards at all. The public hearing's been requested, moved, seconded, and approved, and we've moved on to the next agenda item, and you've asked, and subsequently made some consents, I guess, since the basis for holding off on setting this landscaping standards public hearing was so that the tree ordinance could come about, and that you've considered a motion pending or was pending to delay the public hearing on tree ordinance. The reason why the landscaping ordinance was set for public hearing no longer exists, or it appears as if it may not exist. If you want to delay, do a motion to delay the tree ordinance public hearing, pass that, then, based upon that...
I mean, I'm just, I'm just sort of at a loss as to where we need to go right now.
Well, it's kind of form over substance, I, I don't think there's...
We've already, we've already set the public hearing, and, and the clerk has recorded that in the minutes at this point in time. And if we have set that, if, you know, I'm not disagreeable in backing off, I'm just saying that we've established already we want to hold a public hearing unless we take some other action, and what should that action be?
The action would be revisit the prior agenda.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be simpler, though, just to let, let it stand where it is and address if it's convening or not convening the public, public hearing?
That's another way to proceed, certainly not wrong, if that's simply let that sit there and move to continue the public hearing on the landscape. There's lots of ways you could go about it. You could move to open the public hearing on the landscaping matter that has already been passed and set for public hearing, and simply continue that. I would recommend that if you're going to continue it, even though you don't know it's going to happen in the tree ordinance necessarily, you still continue to, to a reading concern. And then, if you can't, if you don't get to it then, continue with further. I, I would, I would recommend continuing the landscaping ordinance consideration until such time as the tree ordinance comes off the public hearing, because that's not definite enough.
I somewhat prefer to do that, just keep it as we've got it, and then address the public hearing on landscaping.
You have to make a motion and was not seconded, if, if there is no second, the lack of...
Would you prefer than to just do it on the tree ordinance?
As, as far as delaying?
Okay. The motion is to delay the public hearing for the tree ordinance until such time that we have properly vetted it and can give the public what, what we're going to actually do.
Okay. Speaking only of the tree ordinance, do we have a second for, for that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one in opposition to, to delaying the, setting the, the public hearing for the tree or, tree preservation ordinance. So, it passes.
Yes.
All right. That brings us to the next resolution for records retention.
We have Resolution 2013-033, amending the records retention schedule. And if it's okay, I'll ask Joyce Walker, our clerk, can you sort of summarize what's substantively changing here?
Yes, um, excuse me. Let's see, I can say it. The, the folks in Raleigh are always making amendments to what we have to do as far as records retention is concerned. There were five local schedules that were amended, one of which was for municipalities. And basically, the information that was changed had, had to do more with the financial end and records, the budget personnel than, than anything else. And they just changed some wording and removed some information. But, we can't do anything with it until council approves that information. I provided to you the actual changes that were done, and we'll see those highlighted in yellow, and the sheets that followed behind it gave us the information on what was to be changed. The other item that I wanted to call to your attention on that is, when they sent out the original one last year, they sent it to us in PDF format, but I asked for it in Word format, so that I could actually go in and make whatever changes were pertinent to the town of Louisville, which changed the page numbers that they referred to. So, you will see mine with different page references than theirs. On the resolution, if you go back to the actual resolution, you'll notice that I had highlighted paper copies that we kept for background. And initially, before I got my external drive, of which I am so happy, we were keeping all these paper copies, and we were going to keep them for five years, but now that I have the external drive, I can keep the background information now immediately without going to the paper. And, uh, paper is still my friend. And I still have to keep and maintain all official records on paper, and that's it.
Basically, the resolution addresses that. What's, what's your pleasure with Resolution 2013-033?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2013-033.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the last sign. That resolution passes also.
Okay, the next section, we have upcoming events at Shalford Square and town holidays. This weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we will continue the play Smoke on the Mountain Homecoming. And then, on the twenty-seventh, we will have movie night again. And I'm not sure what the movie is this year, this time.
Madagascar Three?
Is it Madagascar Three? Okay. All right. And that brings us on up to October nineteenth, for what I'm going to talk about this evening, and that will be the Shalloween Festival. And then, the next day on the twenty, I guess the next Friday would be, or Saturday, I'm sorry, is the rain, the make-up rainy day for that.
And then we have a play. The play?
Right, that's what I, this conference is...
It's fantastic. I need to go see it, it's great.
It is. It certainly would urge all of our citizens, if we've had a chance to see the performance. Actually, it's the, the exact cast.
Yes, it is.
From, from the original Homecoming, Smoke, Smoke on the Mountain. This is the reunion, I guess, and so...
It is terrific.
But, it's very well done. They certainly are in keeping with the tradition that has been established here in Louisville for quite some time, of bringing outdoor performance to, to our citizens. And all it takes is to bring a chair. Well done.
Okay, that takes us into our...
So, you, you mentioned the Louisville Civic Club, the, the forum?
I was about to.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah. Under reports, we have two things to, to speak to this evening. The first is the annual North Carolina League of Municipalities Conference. That will be Sunday, October thirteenth, through Tuesday, October fifteenth of this year in Hickory, North Carolina. And the second to mention this evening is, is there will be the Candidates Forum hosted by the Louisville Civic Club, and it will be on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, at seven PM, held at the Louisville Library Auditorium.
Okay. Very good. This brings us to our second opportunity in, in our agenda tonight for public comment. The rules are the same as they, that they were for the first, that you come forward to the podium, speaking to the microphone, stating your name and address, and limiting the comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Okay. Having no takers. Again, we do have forms available for written comments, and so we'll close the public comments section, the second public comments section, and we will go to council comments. Anything from council members tonight? Any issue? Didn't recognize our news media, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
I was late, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't, didn't want to call that out, but...
I'll be honest.
But, welcome, nice to have you with us tonight. Thank you. Anything else to capture?
I was trying to flip back through this year's, can Marty or Doris can find out which month that we talked about the landscaping standards in, and which agenda they were on previously?
It was March.
March. I was trying to find them. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn.
We're getting ready to. Yeah, I just wanted to say again to, to our South County deputies, thank you for being with us tonight. Looking forward to working with you, Lieutenant Brent. So, appreciate very much all that you do, and the safety aspects that you bring forward to our community. So, thank you. With that, entertain a motion for adjournment. All in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.